Peace be upon you. This is Said Mirza from William and Reason dot com. This is chapter seventeen of the Quran. We're using Brother Gans translation, the Quran in complete revelation. And Brother Gans translation is unique in the sense that he dismisses all the Hadith literature and uses the Quran itself as a self-referencing book, a book that is complete, fully detailed, which is what the Quran claims to be and looks for the meanings of words within the context of the Quran, using a pen text analysis method and looks at the words and the definitions that are found in the Quran. So it's a very valuable work and I invite you to look at his footnotes, a lot of great stuff in there. A lot of stuff that I'm going to be talking about is from his footnotes, so just to let you know. So let's just begin here, chapter seventeen. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful, I see refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Glory be to him who conveyed his servant by night from the inviolable place of worship to the furthest place of worship which we blessed round about him, that we might show him some of our proofs. He is the hearing, the seeing. Now, the traditionalist understands this verse to be referencing Prophet Muhammad and specifically he has a whole story about how Prophet Muhammad went up into the sky and this is where he was given the five daily ritual prayers. The details of how to do these prayers are not in the Quran, by the way, but anyway, that's another topic for another day. But if we just look at the context here, this is why it's important to read the Quran context, you'll see that this is actually talking about Musa. Because verse two goes on to say, "And we gave Moses Musa the writ and made it a guide for the children of Israel. Take not instead of me as disposer of affairs. Progeny of those we bore with Nuh, Noah, he was a grateful servant." So this is referencing Musa. Now, if you remember, Musa was going with his family in the night, he was traveling, and he saw a fire and he told his family to wait and then he, when he went to the fire, to see what, you know, if he could find some information there or, you know, just looking for help, God called to him. There was the first encounter that Musa had with God, God spoke to him. And that, what happened was, glory be to him who conveyed his servant by night from the inviolable place of worship. This is the Masjidul Haram, which was a place now long gone, nothing to do with what's going on in Mecca. What's happening in Mecca is idol worship, but anyway, this inviolable place of worship, Masjidul Haram, he probably made a stop over there in his journey. And to the furthest place of worship is the Masjidul Aqsa and this is not to be confused with the later named Masjid, place of worship in Jerusalem. Because when the Quran was being revealed, there was no place like that in Jerusalem. So this to me means for this place of worship, this is the place where Musa encountered God, God spoke to him, so it was the furthest place of submission, which is what the word masjid means because Musa spoke to God here. And God had blessed it round about him, this site, that he might show him some of his proofs, which are the two proofs that Musa was given, was shown, and then he was told to go to Faron, to warn him. You're gonna be seeing a lot of prayers in this chapter, it's very interesting. And we already looked at these two prayers, the Masjidul Haram, Masjidul Aqsa, these are the two masjid. And now also we have the, the two proofs that were given to Musa. And then again, it concludes with, he is the hearing, the seeing. "And we gave Moses the writ and made it a guide for the children of Israel. Take not instead of me as disposer of affairs." Now, Musa, Musa was given the writ. If you remember the story of Musa, Musa then, when the children of Israel were liberated from Faron, God drowned him and his army. Musa then went to, for forty nights. And then he was, he spoke to God again, and this is the point where God gave him the tablets. So the writ was given to Musa, but a similar writ was also given to Muhammad, again, the duel is here. And the writ is really what the writ is, we find in chapter two, it says, that is the writ about which there is no doubt, guidance for those of prudent fear. The writ is the set of commands that God gave mankind to follow. In the case of Muhammad and in the case of Musa, the writ was given to the children of Israel, they were the chosen ones. So, to continue. "And we decreed for the children of Israel in the writ, you will work corruption in the land twice and wax high to a great height." Now, what happened is that the children of Israel were given two chances, okay? Again, the prayers are there. So they were to work corruption in the land twice and they were to wax high to a great height and then they would be punished, okay? And we see the punishment happen. Then when the promise came of the first of the two, "We raised up against you servants of ours of severe might, who conducted a search within the homes and it was a promise fulfilled." So, when the first promise came, God raised up against them, servants of his, of severe might, as in they were military capable and they conducted a search within the homes, as in they were able to penetrate the defenses of the children of Israel and, you know, they tasted the evil of what they were doing and this was God's first promise fulfilled. Then we returned to you, a turn over them and supplied you with wealth and sons and made you greater influence. So this is the second waxing high. Verse seven continues, "If you do good, you do good to your souls, and if you do evil, it is to them. Then when the promise of the latter came, that they should disgrace your faces and enter the place of worship as they entered it the first time and destroy all that they overcame with destruction." So, when the second promise came, these servants of God again entered, penetrated the defenses and were, this time, they not only entered the place of worship as they entered the first time, they destroyed all that they overcame with destruction, as in they destroyed this masjid of theirs, which was the temple. And this temple was sort of the central focus of the children of Israel. And so what we can get out of this is that they were scattered after that, okay? It was over for them because they already had two chances and they blew them. And they were disgraced, okay? And this is important to remember, okay? Just keep this in mind. So now, let's see what happens after that. "It may be that your Lord will have mercy on you, but if you return, we will return. And we have made Gehenna a prison bed for the false claimers of guidance." Now, we will see that God will have mercy on them and this will be picked up later in the chapter. But to continue, it says, "We have made Gehenna a prison bed for the false claimers of guidance." Lil Kafirin, now the traditionalist understands this word to mean the disbelievers in a general sense, but Brother Gans went through this word and looked at it in context and specifically what it means, the lil kafirin, the kafirin means, these are the religionists. These are the religionists who claim to be guided, but they actually following other books or they have their own false inventions. And this fits perfectly with what we have just seen. Okay, now the focus shifts to the Quran, verse nine. "This Quran guides to what is most upright and brings glad tidings to the believers who do righteous deeds, that they have a great reward, and that those who believe not in the hereafter, we have prepared for them a painful punishment. And man supplicates for evil by his supplication for good, and man is ever hasty." Why? Because man is wanting this life, the dormant of this life, that's why he's supplicating for evil. He thinks it's good that he gets this life, but actually it's not good for him. Because he is, he is hasty, he is not, he is not patient for the reward of the next life. Again, you see the pairings here, it's important you keep this in mind, this, in my book, William and Reason, God's Arguments in the Quran, I devoted a whole chapter, pairs of proof of pairs in the Quran. And, you know, this is a powerful proof, anyway. "And we appointed the night and the day as two proofs, and we erase the proof of the night and make the proof of the day sightgiving, that you might seek favor of your Lord and that you might know the number of years and the reckoning and everything we have set out and detailed with full explanation." So again, see the prayers, night and day as two proofs. And, so that we might know the number of years and the reckoning, this is obviously referring to the day of judgment. And everything have we set out in detail with full explanation. So this, right here, this part just completely shatters any assumption or argument or, or claim by the Muslims that the Quran is in need of any other books or literature or explanations. God has already set out in detail for the full explanation, the Quran is a complete scripture. This, this part you really need to understand because once you understand that, then you see that the religion of Islam, whatever your forefathers were practicing and you inherited through them, it's not in the Quran. This, the Quran doesn't talk about a religion, it's talking about the doctrine of God, which is to believe in God in the last day and do good deeds. Verse thirteen continues, "And every man, we have attached his fate to his neck and we will bring forth for him on the day of resurrection a writ which he will find unrolled. Read thou thy writ, thy soul this day suffices as a reckoner against you. Whoso is guided, he is but guided for his soul, and whoso strays, he but strays against it. And no bearer bears the burden of another, and we do not punish until we have raised up a messenger. And when we intend to destroy a city, we command its opulent ones, but they are perfidious therein, so the word becomes binding upon it and we annihilate it utterly." So, God sends a messenger because when their time comes, as you already see about children of Israel, so this continues on, when, when God, God will not punish until he raises up a messenger. And when the messengers come, then they deliver God's warnings, as in God has commanded the, the opulent ones to do certain things, storm of the elites, because the elites are really the ones in charge, the plebs, if you will, they, they just kind of follow the brainwashing and the programming and propaganda that was created by the elites. So, we command its opulent ones, but they are perfidious therein, see, they, they are perfidious towards the command of God. And this word of fasaka, it's actually, has a specific connotation of breaking covenant, the covenant of God. That's what the word, this, this word means in the Quranic context. "So the word becomes binding upon it and we annihilate it utterly. And how many generations have been destroyed after Nuh, Noah? And thy Lord suffices as one aware, seeing the transgressions of his servants. Whoso desires this fleeting life, we hasten for him therein, what we will, to whom we wish. Then have we appointed for him Gehenna, wherein he will burn, condemned and banished." And Gehenna in Arabic is Jahannam, which is usually translated as hell. "And whoso desires the hereafter and strives for it as he should and is a believer, those their striving is appreciated. To each do we extend, to these and to those, from the gift of thy Lord, and the gift of thy Lord is not restricted." So God extends his, his help, I mean, he grants resources to, to the believers and the unbelievers. Because he wants to see what they will do, what we will do. "See thou, how we have preferred some of them over others, but the hereafter is greater in degrees and greater in preferment." Now, obviously, in the, the, the traditional understanding of thou is that this is referencing, this is speaking to Prophet Muhammad and I agree with him to a certain extent. Obviously, he was the first recipient of the Quran and he was directly being addressed. But this just, this is just, this is to anyone who is reading the Quran. So, you know, this is something that you should go see, see, see how God has preferred some of them over others. You see how there's different levels in life, you have the, again, like I talked about the elites, then you have like the, the ones serving the elites and then you have the upper middle class and all this. This is all, these are all, dadajat in Arabic is the word use, so ranks or degrees. "Make thou not with God another God, lest thou sit down condemned and forsaken." Now, we get to the point where this Quran is, where did I go? Yeah, this Quran guides us to what is most upright. So this is the guiding to what is most upright here. Trying to show you how the Quran connects. Okay, so, yeah, so this is the guidance. "Make thou not with God another God, lest thou sit down condemned and forsaken," as in he is one God, there is no other God besides him. "And thy Lord has decreed that you serve not save him, and towards parents good conduct. Whether one or both of them reaches old age with thee, say thou not fight to them, nor repel thou them, but speak thou to them a noble word. And lower thou to them the wing of gentleness out of mercy, and say thou, 'My Lord have mercy on them, as they brought me up when I was small.' Your Lord best knows what is in your souls; if you are righteous, he is to those of returning and forgiving. And give thou the relative his due, and the needy, and the wayfarer, but squander thou not wastefully. And a squanderers are brothers of the Satans, and the Satan is to his Lord ungrateful." So, somewhere else it says that, you know, don't, don't tie your hand or don't extend. So, I mean, you know, just take a middle path, this is really what the Quranic message is. Don't, don't be, you know, extreme. "But if thou turnest away from them, seeking the mercy from thy Lord that thou expectedst, then speak thou to them a gentle word, and make thou not thy hand chained to thy neck, nor extend thou it to its full extent, then sit down blame worthy and denude it. Thy Lord expands provision for whom he wills, and he straightens, he is of his servants, aware and seeing. And kill not your children for fear of poverty. We will provide for them and for you, the killing of them is a great offense. And approach not unlawful sexual intercourse, it is sexual immorality and evil as a path." Approach, not. "And kill not the soul which God has made unlawful, save with justice, and whoso is killed wrongfully, we have given authority to his ally, but let him not commit excess in killing, he is supported." Now, obviously, the world we live in or the state we live in, the state has taken upon itself to defend the weak and, you know, bring justice to the people, et cetera, et cetera. But in God's writ, the person who, who, who's kin was, was murdered, they have the right to take revenge. "And approach not the property of the father, lest save with what is better before he reaches maturity and fulfill the covenant, the covenant is to be questioned." So, this is the covenant and this, what I was referring to, breaking the covenant, which is the mark of the perfidious, the fasiqun, this is what it's referring to. This is the covenant that we enter into when we say we believe. It's right here, nothing about, you know, you notice that the Islamic rituals and, you know, the Hajj and all this other stuff that you, you, you know, you're told to practice and, and perform mindlessly, this is not in here in the Quran. But this is the covenant and the covenant is to be questioned. "And fulfill the measure when you measure and weigh with the straight balance, that is better and best in respect of result. And follow thou not that whereof thou hast no knowledge, the hearing and the sight in the heart, each of those will be questioned. And walk thou not in the earth exultantly, thou will not cleave open the earth, nor wilt thou reach the mountains in height. All that, its evil is hateful in the sight of thy Lord. That is from what thy Lord has revealed to thee of wisdom, and make thou not with God another God, lest thou be cast into Gehenna, blame worthy and banished." Now, this word, hikmah, wisdom, which, let's just read Brother Gans note here, okay? He has it at thirty-two, thirty-four, the same word occurs over there as well. And, let's just go through this. "The reader should be aware that traditionalists make specious claims for wisdom, as found here, ascribing it to it on the basis of no Quranic evidence of value, equal to those collections of a later and extraneous literature which he follows in reference to revelation of God." He's talking, he's talking about the Hadith literature. Because the Muslims say that the Hadith is the wisdom that was real to Muhammad and it's preserving the Hadith, but as you see, that the wisdom is being real here in the Quran itself, the hikmah. Just trying to show you how the traditionalists, how the Muslims have hijacked words from the Quran and, you know, taken words, take words out of context to give support to their Hadith literature or their Sunnah or their rituals and all that, when the Quran, if you read the Quran context, you'll see that all their claims are baseless. To continue, verse forty, "Has then your Lord chosen for you sons and taken from among the angels females? You speak a monstrous word." This is referring to the people of Muhammad who used to worship female deities when they preferred sons. And they said that those are the daughters of God, so that's what God is asking here. "Has then your Lord chosen for you sons and taken from among them angels females? You speak a monstrous word." And we have expounded in this Quran that they take heed, but it increases them only in aversion. You can test this out, go, go talk to Muslims or Christians or whoever and, and, you know, recite to them some parts of the Quran, not in Arabic or anything, I mean, you know, just read to them what, in, in, in English, any part and you'll see that it increases them only in aversion, they'll run away from it. I've done it, you can try it out. And it's honestly, it's for your own faith to gain strength. "Say thou, if there had been gods with him, as they say, they would have sought a path against the Lord of the throne." And so that's one way of looking at it, in the Arabic, it says, ilaa means two, so you could, you could translate this as, say thou, if there had been gods with him, as they say, then would they have sought a place, a path to the Lord of the throne? As in, they would themselves be submitting to the Lord of the throne. If there were other gods, because God, God is the Lord of the throne, he is the supreme, see? And this will be picked up later on. Forty-three, "Glory be to him, and greatly, greatly exalted is he above that, above what they say. The seven heavens and the earth, and whoso is in them glorify him. Nothing is saved that gives glory with his praise, but you understand not their glorification. He is clement and forgiving." You don't understand their glorification, but you can certainly hear their glorification. It says in the Quran that the thunder glorifies him. So when you hear the thunder, that's glorifying him, when the birds are chirping, they're glorifying him. Any sound that you hear, the wind, you know, rustling the leaves, that's also God's glorification. So you can, you can, you don't understand the glorification, but you can certainly hear his glorification, his praise. "And when thou recites the Quran, we place between thee and those who believe not in the hereafter hidden partition." And this is really what the crux of the matter is, that, you know, I've been doing this for eight years now and, I don't know, eight, six years, something like that, so, yeah, but I, I have come to see that this is so true, that they don't understand it. "And we place upon their hearts coverings, lest they should understand it, and their ears deafness. And when thou remembers thy Lord alone in the Quran, they turn away, they turn their backs in aversion." Yeah, yeah, it's true. And, you know, if you go back to the Muslims example, I'll give you those examples because I'm, I come from a Muslim family as well, I was born and raised in the Islamic religion, so I know a lot about it. I've seen it, I experienced it. The, the Shahada, which is their initiating statement into religion Islam, it contains God's name and Muhammad side by side. Like they're not just happy with saying lai 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 lai, they have to put Muhammad Rasulullah in there, see? And if you remind them, Lord of God alone in the Quran, they turn their backs in the version. And if you go to a lot of these masjids, you'll see God's name, Allah, and then Muhammad side by side written as well, so. They, they can't help themselves, they have to ask their partners to God. "We best know for what they are listening when they listen to thee, and when they are in private conversation, when the wrongdoer say, 'You follow only a man taken by sorcery.'" Now, to me, this means that they're always, they're not really listening with the intent of understanding, they're listening with the intent to argue. They're just trying to find something to, you know, trip you up with or, or lay a trap. "See thou how they strike similarities for thee, then have they strayed and are not able to find a path. And they say, 'When we are bones and dust, will we be raised up as a new creation? Say thou, be you stones or iron, or creation of what is created within your breasts.' And they will say, 'Who will bring us back?' Say thou, 'He who created you the first time.' Then will they shake their heads at thee and say, 'When is it?' Say thou, 'It may be that it is near.'" Now, this is the first time, obviously referring to, at least to my mind, this means the first creation. This was before this creation. And this is the second creation and then we have the third creation, which is on the day of judgment. It may be that it is near, the day he will call you and you will answer with his praise and you will think that you tired only a little. "And say thou to my servants, that they say that which is best. The Satan provokes to evil between them, the Satan is to man an open enemy. Your Lord knows you best, if he wills, he will have mercy on you, or if he wills, he will punish you. And we have not sent thee as a guardian over them. And thy Lord best knows who is in the heavens and the earth, and we have preferred some prophets over others, and we gave to David Psalms. Say thou, call to those whom you claim besides him. They have no power over the removal of affliction from you or of alteration. Those to whom they call, seek the means of approach to their Lord, which of them should be nearest, and hope for his mercy, and fear his punishment. The punishment of thy Lord is to be feared." So, call to those whom you claim besides him, they have no power, they have no power of the removal of affliction from you or of alteration. See, none has power besides God. "Those whom they call, seek the means of..." See, this was referencing what we talked about earlier. If there were gods besides him, they would also seek a means to the Lord of the throne. Now, in the case of the Christians, it's pretty clear cut that they are calling in the name of Jesus. And, you know, that Jesus himself was hoping for God's mercy and feared his punishment. And to certain extent, it's true about Muslims as well, because Muslims, they, they have this thing where they send Salawat to Muhammad, they're, they're hoping for his intercession on the day of judgment. So, just something to keep in mind. Okay, "And there is no city saved, we will destroy it before the day of resurrection, or punish it with severe punishment, that is in the writ inscribed. And they prevented us from sending proofs, only that the former peoples denied them, and we gave Thamud the she-camel as a visible proof, but they wronged her, and we send the proofs only to put in dread." So, this is referencing the she-camel that was given to Thamud as a proof, but they brutally slaughtered her and after that, they were destroyed by God. And God sends down proofs only to put men in dread, to make them fear. "And when we said to thee, 'Thy Lord encompasses mankind,' and we made the vision which we showed, the only a means of denial for mankind, and also the accursed tree in the Quran, and we put them in dread, but increases them not save in great inordinacy." So this is about the vision that Muhammad was shown. And if you want more details about that, you can look in chapter fifty-three where this is fleshed out in more detail. But the one I want to focus on, the accursed tree in the Quran, which is the tree that grows in the midst of hell. This is the tree of Zaqum, which the evil doers will eat. And this was the same tree that Adam and his wife ate from, when the Satan tempted them, as a result of which they were banished from the garden. And it says, "And we put them in dread, but increases them not save in great inordinacy." So, instead of these proofs being taken seriously, they, because they are means of denial, because by these, by them, you know, mankind either believes or disbelieves and most people, they disbelieve. And increases them not save in the great inordinacy, as in they rebel further. Sixty-one, "And when we said to the angels, submit to Adam, then they submitted. Not so Iblis, he said, 'Shall I submit to one thou hast created of clay?' Now, this Iblis entity is who later becomes the Satan, which just means the adversary. And this is why I switches over to Iblis's account, because we just looked at the accursed tree in the Quran. There's a continuity in the Quran, the Quran is not disjointed, it's just we don't really understand the topics as they move forward. Anyway, so when God said to the angels, submit to Adam, then they submitted, and also Iblis, he said, 'Shall I submit to one thou hast created of clay?' Now, this word submit, if you know the traditional presentation, he takes this word to mean, in Arabic is sajada, and he takes that to mean a prostration during his salat prayer towards a stone idol in Mecca, Saudi Arabia. But what he, what really, what the essence of this word is that he understands is that it's an act of worship. And this word does not mean that it's an act of worship, it just means to lower oneself, as in to not come, be arrogant toward someone, to lower, to humble oneself, that's what this word means. Because otherwise, are you saying that God commanded the angels to worship Adam? Is that what you're saying? So, Iblis obviously was proud, arrogant, he did not want to lower himself to Adam. So he said, 'Shall I submit to one thou hast created of clay?' He said, 'Hast thou seen this whom thou hast honored above me? If thou grant me respite until the day of resurrection, I will master his progeny, save a few.'" So, this was the promise that Satan made, the shaitan, the, the adversary, that he, if God gave him respite, because he despised, despised Adam, because Adam was placed above him, if God gave him respite, as in he would not seize him, until the day of resurrection, he would master Adam's progeny, save a few. "Said he depart thou, and whoso follows thee of them, Gehenna will be your reward, an ample reward." This connects with, my understanding is that this connects with, make thou, make thou not with God another God. Because, because God is the one who is to be glorified, worshipped, praised and followed. I mean, God's commands are to be followed. So, whoso follows the Satan, Gehenna will be their reward. And here's the interesting part. "And incite thou whom thou canst of them with thy voice, and rally thou horse and foot against them, and partner thou them in their wealth and children, and promise thou them, but the Satan promised them only delusion. My servants over them, thou hast no authority, and thy Lord suffices as disposer of affairs." So, it's a full spectrum war, Satan is giving leave to incite us with his voice. If you ever sit alone and you just observe the thoughts that pop up into your head, you're gonna see Satan in action, okay? Just try that out, that, that's his voice. Rally thou horse and foot against them, this was talking about the state, because the state has... Uh because uh the state has the resources to marshal against the believers, right? Um states are are tools of the Satan. And religions as well, but I mean, the state, this is the horse and foot, this has to do with uh military. Um a military exercise, uh you know, the state. Ultimately, the state uses a threat of violence against its citizens. And partner thou them in their wealth and children. Obviously, this is self-explanatory. People lust after wealth and children, and as a result, they lose their way. My servants over them, thou hast no authority. This is not my righteous servants. It says my servants. Everyone is God's servant, okay? Everyone is God's servant. So Satan doesn't really have any authority over us. He can scare us, he can promise us, he can tempt us, he can do all these things, but he doesn't really have any power over us. Because our Lord suffices as disposal of affairs. Your Lord is he, uh your Lord is who drives for you the ships upon the sea that you might seek of his bounty. He is merciful towards you. But when affliction touches you upon the sea, stray have those to whom you call, save he. Then when he delivers you to the land, you turn away and man is ungrateful. Do you feel secure that he will not cause a portion of the land to swallow you or send against you a storm of stones? Then would you not find for you a guardian? Do you feel secure? Do you feel secure that God will not punish you? None feels secure against the plan of God, except the wrongdoers. Or do you feel secure that he would return you to it a second time and send against your raging storm of wind and drown you for what you denied? Then would you not find for you against us and therein, as in he delivered you the first time, but you turn away and you were ungrateful? So you, that's denial. So do you feel secure that he would not return you a second time on on the ship, and then this time he will drown you? Uh. Two times. We have honored the children Adam and carried them on land and sea and provided them with good things and preferred them greatly above many of those we created. Land and sea pair. Yes, this is what uh Iblis said here. He said uh um. Does thou see him uh who you uh gave uh, who you honored above me? Where did it go? Yeah, hast thou seen this whom thou hast honored above me? See, God has honored us by 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 um. Giving us all these resources by carrying us over the land and the sea and providing us with the good things. The day we call each people with their record, then whoso is given his writ in his right hand, those will read their writ and they will not be wronged here upon a dead stone. And whoso is blind in the world will be blind in the hereafter and further astray in the path. And they had almost seduced thee away from that, we reveal to thee that thou invented about us other than it, and then they would have taken thee as a friend. And were it not that we had made thee firm, thou wouldst have relied upon them a little. Then would we have let taste, let thee taste double in life and double in death, then wouldst thou not find for thee against us a helper? And they had almost driven thee out of the land to turn thee out there from, and then would they not have tired after thee save a little? This has to do with the Satan again. See, it's saying here, uh inside thou whom thou can. Where did that go? Inside thou whom thou canst of them with thy voice, see, this is the seducing part, and rally thou horse and foot against them. So. So he's, first he's trying to seduce the recipient of Quran. Where did it go? See, he seduced thee away from what we reveal to thee, and then because he was firm, then. Uh he rallied horse and foot against him. The practice of those we have sent before thee of our messengers and thou will not find in our practice any alteration. And this practice has to do with God sending messengers or prophets uh as as warners and bearers of glad tidings. I mean, actually, the messengers, the prophets have a different function, but uh the messengers, they come as bearers of glad tidings and warners, and when the people reject them, uh. Then uh God's punishment becomes binding upon them. They try to prosecute them actually and persecute them. That's when the punishment comes. So had they driven you out of the land uh to turn you out there from, then they would, their their term would be up. They would be punished because that's the practice of God. Um regarding his messengers whom he sent before Muhammad. And you will not find in God's practice any alteration. Uphold thou the duty at the merging of the sun until the dark of the night, and the recitation of dawn, the recitation of dawn is witness. And some of the night, keep thou widget with it, as in addition for thee, it may be that thy Lord will raise thee to a prestation. And say thou, my lord, cause thou me to enter at a true entrance and to leave at a true exit, and appoint thou for me from thyself a helping authority. And say thou, truth has come and vanity has passed away, vanity is to pass away. So this has to do with upholding the duty, which in this context means to warn. Uh the messenger had the duty of uh of of setting up these uh sessions where he was warning. Um you 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 definitely can take this to mean, yes, as as our duty, it is to uh worship God or uh you know. Stand up and and warn, sure. Um I have no problem with that. Uh I mean, the context treats of it that way, because he is imploring here, he's he's imploring to God, and that's what salat is. Uh in this context, see, my lord caused thou me to enter a true entrance and to leave a true exit. Uh and appoint thou for me from thyself a helping authority. And say thou, truth has come and vanity has passed away, vanity is to pass away. This to me refers to saying this to the people, see? So it's both. And we send down in the Quran, what is a healing and mercy for the believers, but increases not the wrongdoer, save in loss. See, Muhammad was reciting the Quran. And this was a healing and mercy for the believers and increased not the wrongdoers, save in loss, because they increased in aversion. And when we favor a man, he turns away and distances himself, and when evil touches him, he is without hope. Say thou, each does as he sees fit, but your Lord best knows him who is guided in the path. And they ask thee about the spirit. Say thou, the spirit is by command of my lord, and you have been given of knowledge only a little. Now, this how, this has to do with the vision that was given Mu- Muhammad, and I I ask you. I invite you to look at chapter, which one is that, fifty-three? I think it's fifty-three. Yeah, the star. Your companion. So you you need to read this this chapter to understand what this is referencing, okay? This was the vision that was granted Muhammad. Uh that's already been talked about here. Where did that go? Okay, and when we said to thee, thy Lord encompasses mankind, we made the vision which we showed thee. So Muhammad was granted a vision. Of uh the spirit uh twice. This is in fifty-three, chapter fifty-three. So, uh obviously, then uh they asked him more about the spirit. See, that's why it says here. And they ask thee about the spirit, because he was granted a vision of them, of of it, and uh the response that Muhammad was told to say to them, say thou. The spirit is by command of my lord, and you have been given of knowledge only a little. Because the function of the spirit is to deliver knowledge, you know, that's what. So we are only given of knowledge only a little. And if we willed, we would take away from what we have revealed to thee, then wouldst thou not find for thee therein us, therein against us a guardian? Only by mercy from thy lord, his kindness to thee is great. Because God revealed to him the revelation. Say thou, if the serva and the dominai gathered to produce the like of this Quran, they would not produce the like thereof. Though they were helpers one of another. And uh in Arabic, this is al-inswal-jin. And the traditional understanding is that this is referencing al-ins is in mankind and jin is the um. This is the uh the things that are, that that Iblis is is of them. He, they are the unseen um. Um unseen forces in the sense that they are unseen creatures. Um and they influence men um via. Setting up desires and stuff like that, so. Um just trying to show you both perspectives here. And we have expounded for men in this Quran, every similarity, but most men refuse save denial. And they say, we will not believe thee until thou cause a spring to gush forth from the earth for us. Or thou have a garden of date palms and grape wines, and thou cause rivers to gush forth in the midst thereof abundantly. Or thou cause the sky to fall as thou hast claimed upon us in pieces, or thou bring forth, bring God and the angels before us face to face. Or thou have a house of finery, or thou ascend into the sky, and we will not believe thy ascension until thou bring down upon us a writ we may read. Say thou, glory be to my lord, am I anything save a mortal messenger? So all these demands they had. Before they would believe, but they wouldn't believe, because God, if God puts a seal on your heart, then you know, even if the dead were made to speak to them, they would not believe. And um. This actually destroys the argument that about the the story that the Muslims have about Muhammad ascending into the sky. Because this was part of the demand. They said, we will not uh, or you, or thou ascend into the sky. So do this, ascend in the sky. Well, according to the hadith literature, he did. But the answer he gave them is glory be to my lord, am I anything save a mortal messenger? So he was unable to do any of these things that they were demanding of him, because he was just a messenger immortal. And they prevented men from believing when the guidance came to them, only that they said, has God raised up a mortal as messenger? This is really the the point here, that they would not accept. They wanted the angels coming down to them, because they're proud. Say thou, had there been been in the earth angels walking securely, we would have sent down upon them from the sky an angel as messenger, as in like for like, right? Your men, so you uh God will raise up men. Say thou, sufficient is God as witness between me and you, he is of his servants aware and seeing. Sufficient is God as witness that he sent down this Quran, and whom God guides, he is guided. And whom he sends astray, for them thou will find no allies besides him. And we will gather them on the day of resurrection on their faces, blind and dumb and deaf, they shelter his gehenna. Whenever it subsides, we will increase for them an inferno. That is their reward, because they denied our proofs and said, when we are bones and dust, will we be raised up as a new creation? Have they not considered that God who created the heavens and the earth has power to create the like of them? And he has made for them a term whereof, there is no doubt, but the wrongdoers refuse save denial. So have they not considered this fact that God has created the heavens and the earth? And if he can do that, then does he not have the power to create the like of them? And uh that God has already set a term for us, there is no doubt of it. I mean, we have a limited time span that God knows. Um and so after that, he will raise us. Say thou, if you possess the treacheries of the mercy of my lord, then would you hold them back for fear of spending and man is miserly? So now we go back to the story of Musa, which was in the beginning of this chapter, and 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 let's read what that says. And we gave Musa, Moses nine clear proofs, so asked thou the children Israel. When he came to them and Pharaoh said to him, I consider thee oh Moses one taken by sorcery, one oh Moses, one taken by sorcery. Sorcery has to do with illusion, okay? As in you've been hoodwinked. But here's the thing, Musa was given nine clear proofs, and the the two proofs that were shown to him in his first encounter. This is referred to in the beginning of this chapter, where that he could, he threw his staff and it became a serpent and his hand. Uh became white, but there were seven other proofs that were um subsequently um. Manifested when Pharaoh denied and persecuted Musa and the believers, the genocide with him. This is referenced elsewhere. Um you know, the the locusts and the the drought and all that. The blood, so. So basically, these proofs did not avail uh Pharaoh and his his ilk. Uh because they they denied, so um. But they were sent to to put them in dread. He said, thou hast known that there sends these down only the Lord of the heavens and the earth as a means of insight, and I consider thee oh Pharaoh, Pharaoh destroyed. As a means of insight, as in take heed. And he wished to turn them out of the land, and we drowned him and those with him altogether. So Muhammad's situation was not unique. Messengers were always. Uh persecuted, and uh God's punishment became binding upon the unbelievers. And we said after him to children Israel, dwell in the land, and when there comes the promise of the ladder. We will bring you in a mixed multitude. Now, brother Gans, translates this as hereafter. Uh I understand this to mean, al-achira means the he uh the ladder, that's what the word means. Achira means, awal means first and achira means. Um well, awal means first, um also former, and achira means. Um last, and it also mean um ladder, okay? And and the reason I think that is because uh you remember in the beginning of this chapter. Uh God said that it may be that your Lord might have mercy on you after. Uh the two times that they were asked higher and they were punished, and then the second time when they were destroyed, this was a complete destruction, their temple was destroyed and they were scattered, right? And God will have mercy on them. So this is what, this promise, okay? This is the, this is that promise now. That when there comes the the promise of the ladder, we will bring you in a maximum multitude, as in now that you are scattered. And if you know anything about how this works, and I mean, I know from my own people how this works, because the Pakistanis are scattered now. I'm not saying that you're not sorry, I'm just saying, when a nation is destroyed, when a nation is finished, then what happens is that the people obviously are scattered. And then they intermarry with other uh races and uh their culture obviously is finished, their language is finished and. Um obviously, when they're mixed with others, then you know, they become a mixed multitude, you know, they're not like. Uh a a separate group. So the children of Israel were in this stage now, they were a mixed multitude, because they had gone out and married with other, you know. Um races and they were a mixed multitude, but now they were being uh brought back together under the ages of Muhammad. The last messenger, the 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 uh the Umm Yun uh prophet, as in he was the unlettered prophet. Um he did not have knowledge of the book. It doesn't mean that he was unlearned or anything like that, as in he was illiterate. Anyway, so now this is the promise that's being fulfilled, okay? And with the truth have we sent it down, and with the truth has it come down, and we send thee only as a bearer of glad tidings and a warner. And as a recitation, we divided that thou recited to men in stages, and we have sent it down as a successive revelation. So, this was the duty of the messenger to recite the revelation of God. We already looked at uphold the duty at the two ends of the day. And uh that Muhammad was to recite to men in stages. And then to, he was directed to say, say thou, believe in it or believe not, those given knowledge before it, when it is recited to them, they fall on their faces in submission. And they say, glory be to our lord, the promise of our lord is fulfilled. And they fall on their faces weeping and increases them in humility. So this is the people, the the children of Israel, who were now scattered, disintegrated. And they were a mixed multitude, and God's promise to them that they would be brought back together. Um was being fulfilled when the last prophet came. Because they had been given knowledge before it. Verse one ten continues, say thou, call to God or call to the almighty, by whichever you call, to him belong the most beautiful names. And be thou not loud in thy duty nor quiet therein, but follow thou a path in between, and say thou. Praise belongs to God who has not taken a son and who has no partner in dominion nor ally from weakness, and magnify thou him with glorification. And this is obviously the salat. Um which the messenger was told to uphold, and we are to uphold as well. And again, the understanding of salat as uh as a duty is correct. Uh because um calling to God is our duty, seeking help from him is our duty, worshiping him is our duty. Uh but also keeping his commandments is our duty, so the word salat is a generic term. Anyway, we're almost at the one hour mark, so I'm just gonna stop here and I'll try to finish off chapter eighteen in the next session. Um yeah, let's just go with that. God willing. Until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.